2020 City and County of Honolulu, District One, Council Member Candidates Forum. I'm Lila Mower, President of the Kukua Council and your host. Mahalo to my valued colleagues for their logistical support, especially Doug Matsouka, Loira Scheibert, Rick Tabor, and Helen Wagner. Mahalo to Kukua Council's members and friends who are watching through Zoom or Facebook and suggested questions for our candidates forums, who will ask as many of those questions as time allows. For most of you, this program will be in a watch-and-listen-only mode. Everyone will be muted except the moderators. Each candidate will be unmuted when it is their turn to speak. The Kukua Council is one of Hawaii's oldest advocacy organizations. We engage those who are interested in shaping the future and the well-being of our community. As examples, in early March, more than two weeks before Governor Ege issued stay-at-home orders, the Kukua Council held a press conference. We requested our local governments to address the pandemic and reveal their plans for older adults. Lieutenant Governor Josh Green and many other advocates for seniors participated in that conference. In April, with worldwide news that residents of nursing homes and long-term care facilities were among the most susceptible to COVID-19, the Kukua Council held a public conference with Hawaii's long-term care ombudsman, John McDermott. Ombudsmen from the neighbor islands also joined in and all voiced their concerns about the vulnerability of local care home residents and their caregivers. Last month, the Kukua Council held the first public Honolulu Neo Forum via Zoom. Despite technical glitches, over 1,600 people were able to learn about these candidates via Facebook, YouTube, and Zoom. Today, we hope that we'll learn about the candidates for District One Councilmember seats. A seat, excuse me. All candidates who were reporting as having filed the candidacy as of June 12 were invited to participate in this forum. The order in which the candidates will speak was randomly determined in advance. There will be audible warnings to let the speaker know that it is time to wrap up. In the first round, the warnings will come at 30 seconds and at 15 seconds before the allotted time expires. With all other rounds, there will only be a 15-second warning. Then, although we do not want to be rude, but to be fair to all, when the allotted time expires, the candidate will be muted and the next candidate will be unmuted. So let us begin this forum with the first rotation. Let me put this on speaker view. We will hear from each candidate. In three minutes, please tell us who you are and why you think you should represent District One at the city council. Andrea Tupola, will you please start?
Hi, aloha, everyone. My name is Andrea Tupola. I'm happy to be here and want to thank Kukua Council for hosting this wonderful forum today. I first started in community service at the neighborhood board level, at the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board. At that time, I was teaching music at Leeward Community College and UH West Oahu. I have a bachelor's and master's in music education. I love singing and directing choir. At the time, I was interested in getting involved because I was helping, I previously had helped a presidential candidate, and I just really wanted to be a part of helping to shape the decisions that affect future generations of residents right here in Hawaii. Shortly after, I started to get involved. People asked me to run for office. I didn't really think it was a great idea, but once I started to speak to people and understand that running for office is representing other people's voices, I love voices and I love hearing them and I love putting them in places where they can feel empowered and where they can make a difference. So I ran for the first time for State House Representative, District 43, which is from Oa to halfway through Maile, and I won my very first time. It was such an honor to represent the Waiteanai coast twice. In 2014, I won with 56% of the vote, and in 2016, I was able to win again with 67% of the vote. I love helping out in the community and really serving and listening to the voices in the community is one of my favorite things to do. I held 41 town halls while I was a State House Representative. To date, over the past six years, I've done 22 cleanups and I've done various things to mediate problems between landlords and tenants for overpriced utilities. I've also held five annual emergency preparedness fairs for the community, gifted about 680 dresses, and raised issues about domestic violence. During this COVID time, I was able to help the community distribute 13,800 meals. In fact, I just did some this morning in Kapolei again. It's just been a wonderful thing to empower people to be a part of creating change in their own community and helping them to understand that we have the power within us to make that change. And being a part of a elected body helps me to even more so bring those voices of the community to the forefront. So this year, I was approached by Councilmember Pine about running for her seat. I wasn't really thinking about doing it, but after praying about it, speaking with my husband, and determining that a lot of my work had been city and county work, I'm more than happy to be running for this race and I've learned so much. I'm very grateful to be a part of this and can't wait to be a part of continued service through having an elected position. Mahalo.
Thank you, Andrea. Kathy, you're next.
Well, thank you, Kukua Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to really help introduce myself to you all and to the community. To give you a little bit of background about myself, I'm going to go back to when I was a cadet in ROTC many years ago at a Midwest university. And it was at that time, I was told by a flight commander who said, "Look, don't expect to go far because you already got three strikes against you. You're short, you're female, and you're minority." And I thought, "Well, shoot, maybe I'll just go ahead and go home." But I didn't, actually, I thought, "You know what? I am just going to do the very best that I can." I didn't think, "Okay, I'm going to get on a bandwagon." I wasn't going to be some sort of super advocate. I just thought, "Just do the best that you can." And I did that, and I wound up graduating at the very top of my military class. I went on to have a great career in the military. I was selected to work not just with any career, but I was actually selected to work with fighter pilots, the really the top, the cream of the cream in the military, which is really what the Air Force was all about. And I actually got to train them on enemy threat systems. I'm actually an air defense expert. And I got to train them on threat systems and I also got to work with units to make them be the very best that they could be in order to serve at the highest capability. So that's always been a theme of what I would want to do. So I retired from the military, went on to start my own business, worked a very small business of one. I also worked in city government. I also have worked in the private sector, have done a lot of community work and community volunteer work across the community for over 20, 20, 25 years here in this area. So the community does know the work that I've done on a variety of different levels. Other things, just so that you can get to know where I'm coming from, I've been a single parent. I have been a caregiver for an ailing family member who was terminal. So I know those stresses and strains. I went on, obviously, then I was widowed. I had my own cancer experience. I've had the struggles as a small business owner. So with these experiences in the community and talking with the community people, I know what they're going through. When they say, "Kathy, I'm having a hard time," it's some of the unspoken things that they're talking about that I know are the stresses that are affecting their lives. So a quick 411 about me. Lived in the community for 22 years, 25 years total here in Hawaii. I've worked at the national, international, and local levels for over 35 years. I'm still very active in the community, on the school community council. I'm a member of American Veterans. I trained business owners on how to be more successful. And I'm also a motivational speaker and life coach in the community. I've been honored as one of the 100 most influential Filipino women in the United States, and that was for my work in helping others succeed. I was also recognized by the Small Business Administration as the Women in Business Champion, and I've been named as one of the top 25 Business Women of the Year. I'm running for city council because I understand this is a commitment and I understand the people in this community. I know the issues in this community because I've worked with them for a number of years. I also have the life experience to be able to relate, and I appreciate this opportunity to be able to share my experience and I look forward to representing this community on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Kathleen Davenport. Naomi Hano Hano, you're next, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, great. All right, thank you so much for this opportunity. I am just a simple person. I've worked in state and city governments, mostly the city, for about 21 years. I was shop steward in both positions I was in. I grew up in town and I moved to Nanakuli so many years ago when I was quite young and married a Nanakuli boy. And I love Nanakuli. I love the Leeward. I don't have fancy degrees that just was not in my, I guess, life happening. I've served in different positions, in some, volunteered in some nonprofits in different leadership positions. And for the past two years, I've been working at the Neighborhood Commission Office as the Neighborhood Assistant. I say, I'm not a professional politician, never been. But knowing the issues that I've heard from the boards, the community concerns, every single month for the two years, you know, I've been working directly with the departments. I've been, you know, helping to get the solutions. I've been helping to get the answers. And I know, I feel I know, you know, just where to go, who to ask to get the correct answers that, you know, might be needed. I don't think it should take an act of God to get a crosswalk or get a sign replaced. I'm just a really simple person. I've also served as an officer on my community association for over five years. I live in Princess Kahana homestead right now. So I'm also a homestead lessee, so I know how that works. Married, like I said, married a Nanakuli boy. I have one daughter, four grandchildren. And they also live in Princess Kahana, so I'm very blessed. Most of my family lives in Nanakuli. And like I said, I don't have a bunch of degrees and, you know, but I have a heart of service, and anyone who knows me know that. I was not going to be in today's forum, as I, you know, as I emailed. But I was able to work out something with my employer, so I was able to be here today. But I really appreciate just the opportunity to be here, let people know who I am, and those who know me know who I am. You know, I'm honest. I have no... I'm not seeking a higher office. I'm just here to serve the public, and if they let me, I will do the best I can. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Galen Kerfoot, you're next, please.
Am I on?
Yes, you are.
Good afternoon, Lila and the rest of the Kukua Council, and thank to all of you and the staff members for making this meeting possible for us, especially during the COVID-19 and all the social distancing. My name's Galen Kerfoot. I'm of Hawaiian Chinese and English descent, born and raised here in the islands of Hawaii. I graduated from Campbell High School. I also attended Leeward Community College and went on to own three of my own businesses in the past as managed as well. I've lived in the district here for 54 years, from the fields when it was sugarcane to this modern city that it's become now. That includes all the problems that have accompanied it as well as all of Honolulu as well, as we grow more. Like Andrea said, as I was talking to people, people started to vent more frustration towards me of the way that the system's running now, and they feel they're not being represented correctly or even bothered. And that's very evident from the last voting issues, when only 32% of the vote of the population decided everything for the rest of us, the 67%. We can't just blame the government, though. Part of it is our responsibility and our fault. We need to all get together and work it out. It is important that everybody register to vote, get somebody to register. If not, then we can't complain. We're allowing the problems to continue. The people are frustrated with the way things are and the way things have been. And that's why I've been asked to run with my opinions for the city council of Honolulu for District One. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Galen.
You're welcome.
This rotation is the first in a series of rotation. Each candidate, starting with Kathy Davenport, has one minute to answer a question. This question is posed by Gary Simon.
Thank you, candidates. I'm Gary Simon. I'm the president of ARP Hawaii and Hawaii Family Caregiver Coalition. My question, in three years, by the end of 2023, which Kupuna policies and programs will you have improved in the city and county of Honolulu? And how will you have improved those Kupuna policies and programs? Thank you. Kathy Davenport?
Thank you for the opportunity to answer that question. The policy that I would first like to see moved forward even further than where it is, since it's just really gotten moving, is Bill 54, the Age Friendly City. The resolutions and bills and the actions that have been started with that, I think there's still, there is still a lot more that needs to be fleshed out. I understand that what this requires is that the city departments have checklists on showing how they are going to make Honolulu more of an age-friendly city. I think that there is much more that can be done with that, and I know that what we need to do is stay on top of that because it's got to be more than just creating a better built environment or talking and just making checklists and saying, "Yes, we did that." We need to make this a living, breathing policy and actionable items that improve the quality of life for our seniors.
Thank you, Kathy. Naomi, you're next. Naomi, if you will unmute yourself, please.
Okay, thank you so much for that question. I am an AARP member, and I know there are lots of... Admit my age, I'm five. There's lots of programs that the AARP have out there for the Kupuna. And I believe that even though AARP is a private nonprofit, then the city should partner with AARP in any way possible. I know there are lots of Kupuna programs, food giveaways, and everything, you know, to help the Kupuna. And like Kathy says, I know the city is working towards making Kupuna-friendly, safer crosswalks and things like that. So whatever I can do as a council member to help support AARP and... I'm done, I'm sorry. Yeah, Kupuna program, then I am there for you. So thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. All right, Galen, you're next.
Okay, on top of the, for our elders as well as myself who's approaching that quickly, we have to look at all the programs, basically, what's been offered and work with the older people to see what they need as far as meals are going and not just handouts and stuff and trying to locate them. We need to know who they are. They need housing, they need meals. We need to really work with them. As they get older, they seem to be lost in the picture. And as it goes now, they're the last ones remaining here, virtually not even able to afford their own homes, that they're having to sell those and move to the mainland with their children. So we need to look at a various bunch of programs and not just the free meal. We need to look at stuff that can stabilize them and give them the life that they've worked so hard for and deserve.
Thank you, Galen. Andrea, you're next.
Thank you so much for that question. In the experience that I've had with the community, I can think of three specific things. One, handy van services. We've had extensive meetings in our community about this. And of course, the way that the system is being run as well as the effectiveness of it, the frequency of it, how long people have to wait until it actually arrives, and then how long they wait for the ride home. So handy van services is specifically something that, you know, the city has some purview over, and transportation for a lot of these individuals is number one because they need to get to the store to buy groceries, they need to visit other family members, and may not have that. The second thing that comes to mind is one of the Kupuna that reached out to me in the Kapolei area, which she is actually a great-great-grandmother who's raising her great-great-grandkids, and she's 70, and I'm helping her with her bills because now it's just ridiculous. She has, you know, one person with special needs. She has three great-great-grandchildren, and she's 70-something, trying to go back to school for nursing so she can pay for her utilities. So I think that there are a lot of Kupuna that are raising their grandkids and great-grandkids that need that kind of support because some of these systems are difficult to navigate through. I do not blame her for having such a hard time in navigating through the different things that she has to go through with her kids as well as with her bills. So I think a program whereby we can actually see some of these compacted problems of Kupuna that are raising young children and figure out how we can better assist them. Lastly, in times of emergency in Waiteanai, it's been super important for us to have a call list because there was a time where a fire came over the mountain into Nanakuli, and I immediately had to get through my phone and call every single person that I knew was not able to actually evacuate their homes. So making sure that we actually have a good communication system between the Kupuna that need that help and assistance, may be bedridden in times of emergency, may need extra assistance evacuating, we need to have that up in the forefront.
All right, thank you, Andrea. This next rotation gives each candidate, starting with Naomi Hano Hano, one minute to answer Doug Matsouka.
Hi, this is Doug. I'm with Hawaii Meals on Wheels and also Hawaii Guerrilla Video Hui. This question comes also from me as someone who experienced homelessness in 2014. And that question is this, given that 7,000 people became homeless last year on Oa, what will you do, what can you do to prevent people from becoming homeless?
Thank you, Doug.
That is such a tough question, especially in today's COVID society. I mean, with so many people are unemployed and struggling, just, you know, that's proven by the food distribution that does not take in account of the people who doesn't have a vehicle to go and get food. So homelessness is something that council members all got to get together and, you know, whether we need to use the Federal Cares Act money to assist, you know, not only the present homeless, but the people who could be potentially homeless. So that is something that definitely needs to be worked on. And also, I like the way the city and the state homeless coordinators work together and get stakeholders to all get together and find solutions. So that's an excellent question, Doug.
Thank you, Naomi. Galen, you're up.
Okay, as far as the homeless problem in Honolulu, what's probably causing it is, one of it is financial. You're looking at rent, you're looking at people with higher property taxes. It's not popular, and maybe it's something we have to look at. And a lot of people that own property don't like it. Maybe it's time that Honolulu started looking at some type of rent control so we can keep these rents lower for everybody to stay. And property taxes, why some of my parents had to buy theirs in 1966, pay hardly anything in property taxes, we haven't done, or they haven't done, just like our neighbors, nothing to their property, yet they're being billed at thousands of dollars just based on the current economy. There should be a property freeze. When that family bought it, maybe that's when it should be lost. When it gets sold, then it can be brought up to a possible raise. But for everyone as a whole, for all of us to support this across the board causes homelessness. There's many of us that are maybe one paycheck away from worrying about that. And that's one thing that we have to look at, and they're not popular issues, and they've never really been looked at before, and landowners aren't going to like it, but you're looking at maybe possibly a rent control for everybody and freezing property taxes over a prolonged period of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Galen. Andrea, you're next, thank you.
Thank you, Galen, for that. Thank you for your thoughts on that. I definitely wanted to share three specific things that I can think about when dealing with homelessness. I work with a lot of encampments. And first off, the first thing that I do is I usually identify. Now, this is different than just homelessness because across the Waiteanai coast, we actually have a large number of shelters as well as encampments. Working with each of them distinctly and differently to identify which ones are actually ready to be empowered, meaning ready to step up and start to help themselves, and ones that actually need to be disbanded because there's a large amount of drug usage or there's a large amount of prostitution. There is a couple in our community that I helped to break up. There was a couple that I helped to create a nonprofit so that they could get off the, you know, the state land and get their own land. So there's different options, and I think actually categorizing encampments would be my first suggestion. Working with HPD to identify differences and especially proximities to educational institutions like elementary schools. Secondly, creating a council whereby we can sit and talk through because some of these issues that they're handling, not only is it because of disconnectedness, but it's because it's very complex and compounded, and they definitely need more than one service in order to get out of the web of homelessness in which they find themselves.
Thank you, Andrea. Kathy, you're up next, please.
Thank you. Obviously, homelessness has got to be one of the top priorities for anyone at any level of government. What I've been studying on this issue is that, you know, to be able to get ahead of it, we have to have a very strong coordinated plan, not just at the city level, which is where I would hope to be able to help from the city council, but also at the state level. We, both the city and the state, have Housing First initiatives. Good initiatives, but why do we have two different entities working the same issue? And on top of that, we have the fact that the city is paying 48% more for their programs for Housing First. So we have some huge disconnects on the housing issues and homeless strategies, just to start with. So what we really need to do to be able to get ahead of this is first get the team working in concert to identify the problems and then come up with the definite plans and actions that can be used to address the problem effectively. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. This next rotation gives each candidate one minute to answer this very popular question from the audience. The pandemic exposed thinly veiled systemic frailties in Hawaii. What will you do to develop new economic opportunities and promote self-sustainability? Galen Kerfoot, will you please start this round? Galen, you need to unmute.
I got it. Okay. The COVID-19 social distancing problem has really raked over the entire business community. We need to look at distant opportunities and how we're going to adjust to things considering the social distance changing, and maybe we have to do a lot of changing to that, too. A six-foot requirement is going to leave a lot of businesses different. We're going to be looking at a new future coming up as to mass entertainment, sports, and a lot of stuff that all of us have got to, got used to, that the future's going to be totally different as we look even to the graduation classes, how they had to deal with everything this year. We just have to set up new programs and be very creative to it. We can't look at old ways because that's going to be history already. All of us are bracing for a new future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrea, you're next, please.
Lila, can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. The pandemic exposed thinly veiled systemic frailties in Hawaii. What will you do to develop new economic opportunities and promote self-sustainability?
Well, I would agree with Galen that this has been a huge hit for local businesses here in Hawaii, huge. And I think that what we've seen is we've seen little networks of businesses coming together to share ideas because at this point, whether or not you're ready for the 21st century, it's here. And so people got to get online, they have to start selling products online, even the delivery services that I've been seeing businesses do that they didn't do before so that they can still have some type of transaction with their customers with the safe distancing protocols. So I think that creativity is one. But I also think that, you know, the city and the state recognizing that there's going to have to be some uptick in that, meaning that there is going to have to be some capital invested in helping these businesses get off their feet because with, the last time I checked, between 30 to 40% of people being unemployed, there's a huge gap that the state is somehow going to have to help us fill so that local families can continue to afford to live here.
Thank you, Andrea. Kathy, you're next, please.
Yes, it's very interesting about this question on the pandemic because just about two weeks prior to this occurring, when we started talking about sustainability, I had been attending a forum at UH West Oahu. And one of, at the primary topic on that was food sustainability. And the researchers and experts at that forum said, Kathy, if we had anything serious happen, then we are going to be in a lot of trouble. And we need to start getting people, get the word out that we have got to take this very seriously and start looking at agricultural sustainability and new technology. We're not talking about having to have acres and acres. We're talking about vertical farming and new methods that can be used to create higher yields. Other areas of opportunity and diversity that I've talked about are in the creative media realm, which we've already got going through many of our schools and the new creative media facility at UH West Oahu. Tremendous opportunities in that arena. And then one other arena that we can look at in diversity and exploring is the high tech, the cybersecurity arena, which we know we have available here in Hawaii and a footprint starting. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Naomi, you're next, please.
Oh yes, thank you so much. I love what all the other candidates were talking about. Diversifying, I mean, for years and years, everyone kept saying, we've got to diversify, we've got to diversify. Everything went into tourism. But, you know, it came to the point where now it's, uh, it's happening. And what I love is, um, being from this Waikiki coast, you know, you got Ma'o Farms, which Michelle Obama actually went to visit. You got Kahumana, who's doing all their good work. Um, you got YNIC riders who's doing the media tech. I agree, we definitely got to diversify, you know, food sustainability, resiliency. Um, I know Campbell High School, their, a lot of their high schools now little academies. You know, they have an academy for education and, you know, different academies. And to build the next generation up, because they will be the one who have to live with our decisions. And, um, yes, food sustainability, support the farms, support high tech. We live in a best time zone ever. And, um, being a high tech media is just perfect for Hawaii and the sciences. You know, we, with astronomy and everything else happening, we need to support the young people and the scientists. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. This next rotation gives each candidate, starting with Andrea Topola, one minute to answer Lourdes Schibert.
Hi, I'm Lourdes Schibert. I'm a volunteer here at Kukua Council. I also serve as a volunteer director on my condominium association. I'm a senior on a fixed income and concerned about property taxes. My question is municipalities can go bankrupt. Other than raising property taxes, how will you create needed revenues? Thank you.
Oh, Lourdes, good question. I like that. Um, so we get that a lot on the state side. And my first thing I always think of is we gotta cut waste. There is so much waste and there are so many consulting contracts. And, you know, this can stem anywhere from 20,000 to 100,000 to maybe even a million. And so I think before we even talk about raising any kind of taxes, which of course I'm against, is talking about whether or not we are actually spending efficiently. The city has X budget and this is not just things we want. This is dependent on things we need, determining that these are the things that the city needs and then prioritizing those things so that we can do things good. Sometimes you want to do so many things and you just do them all kind of mediocre. You need to do a few things and of course do them well. And bear in mind that anytime you ever talk about raising any taxes, that it is creating an unaffordable situation for the people in Hawaii. And my main vision and goal is to make sure that people can afford to live in the state of Hawaii for generations to come.
Thank you Andrea. Kathy, you're up.
Thank you. Okay, let's get into talking about fiscal responsibility at the city. So I've been actually looking at reports going all the way back to 2004, talking about how the city should improve its operations, financial responsibility in using taxpayer dollars. And one of the things, actually there's many things. And bottom line is, I've been reviewing this data and there is millions of dollars that I'm seeing that could have been spent more effectively or that we are just letting go out the water, go out the window. So for example, I was looking at Department of Parks, where we found out that they were told many, many years ago that if they started using non-potable water instead of the potable water, they could have saved 2.8 million dollars. And they had projected they would save 833, but they wasted over 2, um, 2.8 million dollars. We've learned that CIP projects, which had been funded by the city council, over 56% of them were not even enacted over a four-year period. It's this kind of waste and abuse at various levels, looking at all of these reports, that I think is the first areas that we need to go into and say, stop this. This is a waste of our taxpayer money. We can do better.
Thank you very much Kathy. Naomi, you're next, please.
Thank you so much for that question. Um, I agree. We must look at the budget, get in there and where are we wasting? Where can we spend, uh, better, get better value for our money? I mean, it's not a matter of money, it's just a matter of value. You know, you don't want to always go with a low bidder and they do a bad job and you gotta pay someone else to fix their job and it's ridiculous. Um, also we should go in there and look at the budget. Where are unspent funds? You know, why would there be unspent funds? But a lot of times they are unspent funds. And what can we, you know, take that money and use it better for? You know, I'm all about fiscal responsibility. I want to give people the best value. Property taxes increases are definitely known for me. You know, the people here, uh, pay, you know, enough property taxes. And, you know, I would never propose to ever raise a property tax. Um, so yeah, we just got to be more fiscal, you know, have the city tighten their belt and not ask the citizens to tighten their belts. So definitely I'm all about fiscal responsibility and smart spending. And, um, like when people go to a beautiful park or see their street paved and all the street signs are there, they're like more than happy to pay their property taxes. And that is definitely, um, best value is my mantra, I guess you would say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Galen, your response, please.
My response as to needed revenue. What happens is every time it's needed revenue, it comes back to the general public again. It's always us that are going to pay for something. It can be, we're being nickel and dimed for recycling for a, for just a can of soda. If we want a bag, then we have to pay 15 cents. Everywhere, even our cell phones, everybody's cellphone is being tagged five cents. It's nickel and diming us to an extent that we can't pay anymore. That's why people are frustrated. The government itself has to sit down and decide where the duplications are and the waste. We have a rail system that's being built with 21 stations. And there had to have been at least 10 different contractors hired for something like this. Why wasn't just one contractor hired to do all 21 stations? It's a simple waste of money. And even the people that are being hired are from the mainland. We have enough people here graduating from architects inside the university. Why aren't we using them? Our government workers, such as all those that were during the COVID-19, were on paid leave while the unemployment office was so sadly out of people that they couldn't process everybody's claims. Those people, instead of just paying our people on both sides, something should have been done. There's a lot of government waste and they have to start being fiscally responsible for it because the general public cannot afford to keep up with this anymore. And that's why they're frustrated and looking at the four of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much Galen. All right. This rotation gives every candidate, starting with Kathy Javonport, one minute to answer this very popular question. We are heavily dependent on tourism. What is your plan to support the local resident community during, during times of natural disasters and pandemic over the needs of tourism? Kathy, please.
Thank you. And actually, this is something that my community and I were talking about even before the pandemic, was how can we become more sustainable within our own local areas? And one of the things that we are talking about and have been talking about for over a year now is the development of what we're just loosely calling community hubs. And what that does is let's just say we take Kapolei, for example, and we break it up into little hubs in each area. So maybe we've got the school as a center of one hub. And then we've got the local, um, families, the homes against, right next to it. And then we've got the shopping center right there. How can we make that hub self-supporting within each other? And then we look to the next little area and what hubs are there? And the reason these hubs are created is to become self-sustainable, knowing the resources that we have, the people that we have there, and what they can do to help each other and support each other. So that would be one of the things that we are already talking about in doing in the communities, to become self-sustainable over tourism. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Naomi, you're next, please.
Okay, um, yeah, I feel like I agree with Kathy. We all need to work together, but also in our own little groups. Um, you know, because the way it's stated, it seems like the city would protect the tourists more than the locals, and that's not true because there are local people who live in Waikiki. So we have to take in account every community, what their needs are. I know the Waikiki Coast and EVA, they have all those cert trainings. They are good. They are organized, you know. I see their presentations, they, and so many members, so many community members take the training. So I believe, yes, they need to address each individual area differently. The leeward people have different needs than the windward people, but we're all in this together. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Galen, you're up, please.
As for relying on heavily tourism, Hawaii has to wake up because that's going to be coming to an end. We can see that now. It's causing our people to work multiple jobs for very little money. Eventually too, if you look at the state of the tourism that's coming here, they're the older people. It's not the younger people that are coming here anymore. We haven't had any new tourism attractions open. The state and all of us were depending on it, but yet we do nothing for it, except tax us, the regular generation of locals, to help pay to make Hawaii beautiful. And we're paying for the tourists. If they have to, then they need to do it. But we should really look at diversifying away from tourism because that's going to be dying. And like I said, it's an older and younger thing. We need to get into agriculture, but unfortunately we've sold off our land for homes. Um, we need to get that back. We're cutting our nose off in spite of our face. Telecommunications, as Naomi said too, we're in an excellent time zone. We're the last spot on the, the planet Earth. That time will do. You can do stock trading. If everybody goes to the first one that opens in the day, if you come to us at the last in the night, then you will be the first of the day. There's so many ways we can move out. We can move telecommunication, scientific. We can't rely on tourism. That's setting us up for disaster. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andrea, your, your answer, please.
Sure. Galen, so much fire. Um, so yes, I, I definitely agree that part of us understanding how we can diversify is to understand who are we? You know, Hawaii is still about 90% rural. We still have all this land and sun and wait, wind and ocean. We have a lot of natural resources that I think a lot of times we take for granted that those are things that actually can help us. You know, the outreach we did this morning, all the boxes we were giving out were from aloon farms. Aloon farms, which all of a sudden now in a pandemic, everyone now wants to know, where do I get produce from and I need this. And so having farms and whether that's on a commercial level or whether that's individuals understanding better farming techniques, I think it's common sense that we should start to go that direction and also make it easier for businesses to also do that. I'll give you just a real quick example. We have an egg farm in Waikiki that still needs a feed mill. We don't even have one in the state. So they have to order that from overseas to get it shipped in. Small things that can help our ranchers and our farmers so that we can diversify.
Thank you. Um, let's see now. This rotation gives each candidate, starting with Naomi Hanohano, one minute to answer Lourdes Schibert.
Hi. So the next question I have is considering all that is going on with the rail, what are your thoughts?
Who's first, Lila? Is it me?
Naomi, Naomi is. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Am I on? Oh, I, I knew that rail question would come up. Um, you know, so many people ask about the rail. I am all about, okay, there was so many mistakes done in the past. You can't dwell on it. Where do we go from here? You know, we just gotta, just go forward. It would be ridiculous, and this is just my opinion, to tear down everything that has been done so far. So we just need to move forward. But again, look at the contract. Like you said, we don't need 10 contractors and one guy builds one rail and the other one builds the other station. You know, I'm all about best value for the money. You know, it's like, how much can you, you know, how much would it cost your company to pay this competitive and best value? And they need to guarantee their work. You know, I don't want them to work shabbily and we end up paying more. No. Rail needs to be fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Galen, you're up.
My honest answer on the rail itself is everybody thought it was a good idea. Everything is good when it comes in at three or $4 million. However, when it comes up to $10 billion, that's a totally different story. People need to be held accountable for all that. Uh, we need honest answers. Even the rail itself, I think it's going to just bail, drag down all of our people. What, what everyone thought was a good idea, it was just supposed to be this island paying five, an extra half percent tax. It got so out of hand that they had to add the tourist tax to it. They had to have the outer islands pay for it. And there's still no end to it. It's, it's an empty bucket. Um, to even think that you've built it and the past administrations was, well, we have to finish it. We can't just let it sit and tear it down. Then you need to be creative. Maybe you should use it as an expressway into one way into another. Not tear it down, but use it for another purpose and just modify it. Thank you.
Thank you very much Galen. Andrea, you're up.
Thank you. I can't believe we're only going to get one minute to answer this question. But I will try to wrap it up. I gotta double down on accountability. You know, when I sat on the finance committee at the legislature, that hearing when we decided on the special session rail tax extension, that was eight straight hours that we, I didn't stand up once. And it went through testimony after testimony, but unfortunately, no one wanted to take accountability. The mayor was there, there was a city council member there, and then the director of the heartboard was there. Every time we asked a question, somebody would point to somebody else and go, oh, well, it's not my responsibility. Oh, I don't do that. Okay, we are not going to get anywhere if no one wants to take responsibility. So I'm excited to see who's going to be the next mayor because you're going to have to put your foot down and say, I'm responsible for this and I'm not going to let it bleed into every other thing that the city is doing. Secondly, I, I definitely think that extending ideas, maybe bringing parts of it down, maybe extending some bus routes or maybe making a special UH Express. We know that the rail was going to benefit students because parents have to drop off kids along, you know, at school, at practice. So I think finding a way forward that's creative and fiscally responsible is the only answer.
Thank you very much. Kathy, your response, please.
Yes, and absolutely, you know, the rail has to be part of any discussions that we're having with the city. Rail, you know, I'm disappointed to hear that the forensic audit that was proposed by another council member was not, you know, was not going through. Because I think we need answers on where the money has been spent and how it's been spent. So before we can make any future decisions on where we're going to go with this, we need those answers. We also need the answers on how much is it really going to cost us for, to complete? We need to know those contractors' estimates on what is it going to cost to complete the rail. And then we need another assessment now to determine the ridership to pay for the operational costs that we're looking at down the road. Because as we know, the pandemic has changed the way things are, people are going to be, even moving into their offices or traveling to offices. It's going to be different. So we need more information before we can actually even try to find and make the plans on how we're going to even fund rail. It's not a matter of if we're not going to fund it, but how are we going to fund it? How are we going to fund it smartly? And how are we going to have that aggressive oversight to make sure that the dollars are being spent wisely? Thank you.
Thank you very much Kathy. All right. This rotation gives each candidate, starting with Galen Kerfoot, one minute to answer Rick Tabor.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us. You guys are doing great. So I'm actually, you know, I'm the first vice president of the Kukua Council and I wear a lot, a lot of kapuna hats. It would take up the entire time to go through everything. Um, so I'm in Rotary and I do, do chair the Kapuna Caucus for the District. So I'm in Rotary, and I do do Chair of the Kapuna Caucus for the District, the entire state of Hawaii. So I'll just, and many other things, like I said. Our question is, that I'm asking is, what of your past actions demonstrate that you are an advocate for our kapuna? And we'll start with Andrea.
No, no, it's Galen first.
Oh, Galen?
Yeah.
Okay.
As an advocate for our kapuna, that would be like working with, I was a former caregiver, just to help them. It wasn't for something that I wanted, but just to help them, because our kapuna, a lot of the younger ones don't realize, they're very scared of everything. They don't say much to us, because they're a proud group. They want everything best for us, but yet they shy away, and we can learn a lot from them. They probably overcome more than what we have. Just learning from them and just holding on, we need to just stick to that. And like I said, I was a caregiver for a couple people that unfortunately passed away, but those last minutes, I learned a lot from them, both how sad it is and how scared they are. And I was actually very happy to help them along and as they passed on. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Andrea, your response, please.
Yes, I think first and foremost, you know, when I was a representative, holding the 41 town halls was was something that I did, because kapuna in our community want to discuss. They want to talk. So even though I have an online town hall that I was hosting, so that people could speak, those age groups are different than the face-to-face age groups, because they wanted that interaction. And even though some of the townhouse was like 10 people or eight, you know, every issue is important to every family. And so making that time to niche some of the topics that people wanted to talk about, and then finding places for us to gather, hearing their voices, and then taking their voice from the complaint to what's the plan of action, to what is everyone's responsibility, to what I have to execute, and to the result. That'd be the first thing. I think the second thing is, you know, in the homestead, in the areas across Waikiki, intergenerational living is very common. So I think having that respect for the fact that our kapuna are the ones that are teaching us almost everything, you know, encouraging those people in my age group and below to continue to seek out that guidance from your kapuna, because that's who should be helping to guide you in your choice and your decision-making.
Thank you very much, Andrea. Kathy, your next, please.
Thank you. You know, there's a wonderful kapuna group that meets out at Koalina in the mornings. Well, they can't meet now. And I've been meeting with them for probably five or six years, and just walking with them and talking with them, and they share their advice with me. So it's from them that I've learned a lot of what their concerns are. And one of the things that has been stated to me is they say, Kathy, sometimes we just feel like we are the forgotten generation. So the things that I've done, you know, taking that to heart, that I've been helping with the kapuna issues, one of the big ones that I did just recently and earlier this year was I worked with Senator Gabbard, and we initiated the Silver Alert legislation, which got support from AARP, the Alzheimer's Association, the State of Hawaii Executive Office on Aging. Um, I was calling all of those offices to make sure that we could get the support behind that. I've also created community safety forums for kapunas, and we've taught them ways to be self-aware, so that, because as we've been seeing the crimes against kapunas. And then I've been an advocate for complete streets, which, as you know, is making the roadway safer for pedestrians and bicycles, people of all ages. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Naomi, your turn, please.
Yeah, um, as far as kapuna, I mean, I've not done any particular kapuna thing. But yes, I agree with, they really feel they're not heard. Going to the neighborhood boards and, you know, hearing the kapunas' concerns, you know. And a big concern is, like Andrea said, the handy van. They just need to get to the doctors. Um, safe streets, you know, they just wanna get across the street in a timely manner, you know, in a safe manner. And when I was on my association board, um, we were brainstorming on how we could help the kapuna in our particular homestead. We had over 200 homes. And one of the ideas was, you know, when we go around to check the yards, because we do have association standards, like if a yard might be not kept up, you know, maybe it's kapuna. Uncle can't take care of the yard anymore. Auntie can't take care of the yard. Maybe get some volunteers to say, hey, you know, we put out messages to say, if you're having a hard time taking care of the yard, contact the association, and we'll get volunteers to go out and help you, because that's all they want. They just wanna be safe, feel safe, and live in a clean community. And Andrea said, get to the doctors in a timely manner. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Starting with Andrea Tupola, each candidate has one minute to answer Rick Tabor's question. Rick?
Okay, so we have some members that couldn't make it, so I'm asking some of their questions as well. Um, so, this is a big one, current right now. So even before the recent Black Lives Matters riots in America and around the world, locally, uh, there was the K aloha incidents. So the question is, how will you restore faith in the city prosecutor's office and police department? Second question along that lines is, what do you think of defunding the police?
Thank you. Well, I'm glad that it came to me first. I definitely have some strong feelings about this. My husband's been an officer for 14 years now, and I think indefinitely, the way that our officers have interacted with the public here in Hawaii, although you have a few bad apples, we have a lot of good relationships. The group that I was with to this morning in Kapolei had their D8 community policing shirts on, because they work side by side with the officers to keep their community safe. Although, you're always gonna have a few that might shine that bad light. The reality is, many of our cases that are responded to, we would never want to go and respond to those cases. We would never want to be in those situations and having the police force be able to be that barrier between us and some unknown circumstances, very important for the safety of ourselves, for our kapuna and for our community. Secondly, we're gonna be getting a new prosecutor this year. My goodness, it's been a while. And so I think the whole island is excited to see something different happen in the prosecutor's office. A lot of the frustration with HPD is because the prosecutors won't prosecute. So it doesn't matter how many times they arrest somebody, this revolving door of arresting an individual, and then you see them on the street the next day, that should be no more, because this is what makes people feel unsafe, is simple property crime. And the property crime into something worse, into something worse, and that same individual keeps coming out. So I'm excited to support a new prosecutor, whoever that may be, and try to find a better way for us to create this system of justice that people are asking for. The rising crime on the island of Oahu is no joke. We've seen some things that we've never seen within the past couple years, that we would never expect would happen here in Hawaii. And I hope to continue to be an advocate for justice and for community input.
Thank you, Andrea. Kathy, your answer, please.
Thank you. You know, trust is a two-way street, and it's gotta be, it's got to be that way. It's got to be through demonstrated actions and transparency. So we also have to support the police, as well as knowing that they're going to be there to support us. Also, the prosecutors and whatever legislative actions have to take place for the victims of crime. They need to know that they're not going to continue to be victims. One of the things that we've done in our community, and one of the things that I've done, is have very much supported, along with the HPD, their program through the Neighborhood Security Watch programs. And we've created several of those here in the Kapolei, Makakilo, and then now we're extending out into the Waikiki coast. And it gives us that opportunity to create that trust from the ground level, the people in the communities to work directly with our HPD officers. And I think it's through those types of actions that we develop that trust and restore the trust as we've been talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Naomi, your response, please.
As far as defunding the police, I would not defund the police. We have the best police officers ever. Where I work is right across the hall from HPD recruiting. I see hundreds of candidates come in and take the tests, and very few go through. So my thing is to support the officers and what do they need to do their job better? You know, make sure they have their support, because going out to the street and every call, they don't know what's gonna happen. So make sure they have, you know, enough support staff to keep them, you know, on their toes, and for the community to support them. I'm so proud to live in Hawaii, where despite there were protests, we all showed aloha, including the officers. And I believe that it's a two-way street, and if the community shows aloha, they will show aloha. And yes, Andrea's right, there's bad apples everywhere, in every single department. As far as a new prosecutor, there seems to be a wonderful field. So hopefully, um, the prosecutor and the court system can work together better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Galen, your next, please.
Yes. As for the part, Andrea was right. We're actually finally going to be voting for a new prosecutor, so thank goodness for that. What we're looking at, as Rick said, was, we had the K aloha and the Kanashiro people. We're looking at an old-boy network. Those times of changing, and time change is never easy. You've got Susan, who's done an excellent job now, and gets the respect of all the police officers, basically most of them. She's on her way with that, and a new prosecutor, then things look better. It's just like the legislature and everything else. People are looking for change. They're tired of what's going on, the old-boy network. The police, I wouldn't defund them. They've got so much work and knowledge that they need to know that every time a law is passed, it's basically given to the police to enforce. They have so many bills and information they need to know. Some of them could probably qualify to be a lawyer anymore. I think we're overworking them, and they need to help, but I would never defund the police, because once we give lower that, then we're leaving ourselves open to a lot. We have to work together with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. The next rotation starts with Kathy Davenport. You have one minute to answer Barbara Service.
Hi, I'm Barbara Service. I'm a taxpayer. Um, I'd just like to ask, some of you have already touched on this, so I'd like to hear a little more. How will you bring fiscal responsibility to City Hall?
Thank you. I love this question, because it's one that I've been actually researching, even from my time, when I worked on a council member's staff and was reviewing the budget. And I would look at things and I'd say, why are we lapsing these funds? Why is this department asking for more money this year, when I see a lot of money that wasn't used the previous year? I see grants that had lapsed, funds that had lapsed, money that was being unused. So one of the things that I would like to see is the creation, or I would like to recommend, the creation of some sort of a department of accountability and oversight, so that right now, the departments only have to report to the city council on an annual basis, what they're doing and how they're spending their money. I think that should be at least on a quarterly basis, so that we have that transparency on how the money's being used. I mean, the report just came out on parks, not spending $49 million for CIP projects that were allocated to them. That money could have been used elsewhere if they couldn't get it together to be able to use it effectively. We are looking at the Department of Environmental Services, $7 million in fines, because we didn't direct enough trash to H Power. There are a number of different ways that we can be creating this fiscal responsibility. We need a department that's gonna look at it, ask the tough questions, and say, report to us how you are using this money before you come to us, or before we have to go to taxpayers and ask for more money. That's just not right. Thank you.
Kathy. All right, Naomi, your answer, please.
Yes, um, I'm all about fiscal responsibility. I know I said that earlier. And looking for the unspent funds. What are the unspent funds? Why is it unspent? How can we use it better? What department really needs more resources? And like I said, it's not about low bidder, it's about best value. You know, what can we do to best spend the funds? I agree with H Power, with Kathy saying about H Power. We're getting ding, because we're not giving them enough trash. What is that about? That's just, well, yeah. So I'm all about fiscal responsibilities and asking the director, what money do you need? If they say they need X amount of money, they better let us know what they're spending it on or not, or why didn't they spend it? And, you know, it has to be equitable and fair to all departments. But I am definitely about fiscal responsibility and accountability, including on a council level. So everyone gotta know, gotta say, uh, gotta explain. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Galen.
Okay. As far as fiscal responsibility goes for each of the departments, every year, they ask for more and more money. We get less and less for our dollars, and yet there's so much money and taxes that are put onto a rainy day fund. Take, for instance, the CARES Act. The governor wanted to put that money into a rainy day fund. How much more rain is it gonna take for COVID-19? We needed the funds now, not for a rainy day fund. There's so many special funds, it's ridiculous. If the individual departments themselves, we look at them to be fiscally responsible. If they cannot, that is the job of the council to finally say, no, you have this much to live with, and that's how it goes. Every individual, as a public person, budgets, everybody, every single family, and the government shouldn't be anything less. They represent us and not take everything from us to do something else. That's it.
Thank you very much, Galen. Andrea, your turn, please.
That's it, Galen. Good one. Um, I just wanna say, there's something that people always overlook. It's this thing called the auditor. So the state has one, the city has one. In fact, in January 2020, they came out with an audit of DPP, Department of Planning and Permitting. And if you know anything about just the whole huge permitting wait, and that we are the longest in the state to get a permit, this has been a sore spot for the city, but look, there's a 112-page report from the auditor. Now, what legislators do with audits is totally their own decision. You're supposed to open it, and then you're supposed to read it, and then you're supposed to do something about the suggestions that the audit gave. And so if we're gonna have an auditor's office, we should probably open up those documents, because it specifically identifies problems, and then identifies the path that you need to follow, whether legislation, whether departmental budget, of what you need to do to prove it. So I think that could largely increase the amount of fiscal responsibility within the city.
Thank you very much, Andrea. This 10th rotation starts with Naomi Hanahano, and you have one minute to answer this question. With only 20 ambulances to serve a million people on Oahu, what will you do to expand medical and other first-responder services in our community in preparation for the next crisis?
Yeah. I was quite surprised to find out the average mileage of an ambulance on Oahu is 250,000 miles. I mean, by that time, we've all been through a couple of cars. But, um, yes, to ask EMS, what do they need? You know, do they need more EMTs? Do they need more training? Do we need to recruit more EMTs? I know right now, we're using AMR to fill in the gaps when all the city, um, ambulances are full. So just to ask the department, because, uh, what do they need? How can we help them? And if they need more funding? The only strange thing about the EMT is, um, though they're city employees, they get funded by the state. So, yes, we just need to ask EMT what they would need as far as more support. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Galen, your answer, please.
Oh, as to expanding the service and stuff, uh, that's a definite need for everything, because our ambulances are going back and forth, back and forth. Unfortunately, they're also called the Handle the Homeless Program. If they're just hungry or they faint, they're required to do that. AMR fills a service that the state cannot, state and city cannot serve. We have a shortage of EMTs, but part of that is also due to the requirements for an EMT to qualify. I had a friend that went to EMT training, passed it with flying colors, and he couldn't become an EMT, because he had two marks on his record for simply going through a stop sign. When you see a police, when you see an ambulance driving, they're trying to get through as much as they can. I think the rules themselves, as they said, we're creating a problem ourselves. And we need to look at those rules and regulations to loosen it up for others and basically just try to get more people on, because as the population gets older, we're gonna need them more and more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Galen. Andrea, your response, please.
Yeah, um, you know, I wanna add on to what Naomi said. At the state, uh, we talk about this issue all the time, because actually, some of the responsibility lies within the state to fund, um, these programs. And yes, it's really bad here on Oahu, and of course, on the neighbor islands, it's even worse, since the last time they've ever even bought a new ambulance. I think three things, you know, one, I think specifically during COVID, a lot of people were able to determine when and when they shouldn't call an ambulance, because a lot of people were like less willing to go into hospitals, knowing that there might be lots, a lot more sick people in there. So a lot of people were preferring to sick people in there. So, a lot of people were preferring to stay home and seek services via telehealth. So, I think that differentiation between when it's absolutely necessary and when there might be able to be a based, like, online doctor or nurse to help you through your issues. Secondly, I think that, you know, on the state side, it's going to take some political will. It just boggles my mind how it's so hard to fund ambulances because the amount they're asking for is like pennies compared to what the state uses money for. So, that's on them. Like, I literally don't know why it's so difficult there. And thirdly, there's got to be ways around this. I mean, I don't think we have to, we should keep going to the legislature and begging. There's got to be either grants or other ways that we can figure out how to mobilize this within our communities. I love thinking through like public partnerships or maybe community sponsored things, and I don't know what that would look like. But I think at the point we're at, this has been an old conversation. We have to try to create some new paths of solutions and be a little bit more creative and strategic instead of just throwing up our hands and saying, "Oh, they don't fund it again." Like, we've got to sit down and really say, you know what, this is an issue. We're going to sit at this table until this issue is resolved, no matter what it takes. And then if you have that mindset, you can solve any problem. But if you always have the mindset that money's going to, like, you know, be the solution to everything, then you'll never be able to get to the end. So, I think it's a little bit of getting through those mental blocks and just making it happen.
Thank you, Andrea. Kathy, your response, please.
Thank you. You know, when I was in the military, we had a very limited budget. We couldn't expect that we were going to get more than what they said. Here's what you've got to work with. So, we had to find creative solutions. We had to find areas that, where could we cut? What is the real priorities? What do we really need to do? And I think in this case, that's what has to happen first is for the city to really take a look at where are the priorities and how are we going to fund them? What can maybe wait another year? What can't wait? That's the way we have to approach this. And really, again, going back to what I said earlier, looking at where are those areas that there's going to, that there's wasted funding that's not being used, not using it? Let's redirect it. So, again, it's a matter of finding out where are the priorities, how are we going to do this, and making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Naomi, you're next, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm off. Okay. The next question, I'm sorry, the next question starts with Galen. Please answer Rick Tabor within a minute. Rick, please.
Okay, so this next question, identify three innovations you'll promote as a council member.
It starts with Galen. Thank you, Galen.
One innovation is I think we have to look at creating our own recycling plant here in Kapolei. We charge and we take back all the recycling, and yet we ship it off to the mainland. We're talking about creating jobs, creating a new economy. Maybe we should look at actually building up a recycling plant, using the recycling plant itself to make signs for the city. So, why are we spending all the money outside of there? They can use the plastics to make new bus stops, so many other things. Another one is revamping, saving water and stuff. We have a state recycling plant down here that was built many years ago when the water was short. It's sitting there and rusting. It should have been used to some part, either to just use on the golf courses, as the other ones had said. And the third one is for innovations, we just have to just work together and come up with new ideas and make ourselves, even Kalailoa, the airport's just being closed now. Kapolei itself, as the district does, the four of us all know, has every makings of a new city. We have an airport. We have a we have a shipping department. We have everything out here. We need to make use of it and make ourselves known. And with that, we help everybody else in Honolulu. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Andrea, you're up, please.
Good stuff, Galen. I love recycling. I love cleaning. I love doing cleanups. I would say, you know, in the realm of recycling and illegal dumping, which happens a lot out here, there has to be a better way for us to get around this because one of the things Galen brought up earlier is fees. Actually, every landfill pays a fee for, wait, hold on, illegal dumping cleanups. So, where does that money go and why aren't they cleaning the illegal dumping? I kind of know the answer, and some of it's stuck in the state, but either way, like, the whole trash situation in general and recycling really needs to be thought through because recycling areas, which we have it all throughout Kalailoa and Campbell Industrial, these guys are super frustrated because the amount that the state is taking with these high-five bottles and anyways, the whole program itself is not sustainable. And some of these businesses are now charging, whereas they used to give money, like recycling metal. And now that they charge, now there's so much abandoned cars on the side of the road. So, I think that whole program needs to revamp, be revamped in a way that benefits the community where you can actually see a visual difference.
Thank you, Andrea. Kathy, your response, please.
Yes, three innovations that I would want to move forward. Actually, I'm already moving forward on them. One, I've already talked about it, is the development of these community hubs, really getting all of the different elements in a community, in a particular area because they know that area. They know who's committing the crimes. They know what the needs are in that particular small area. So, getting those people together to identify what they need. They're the experts in that location and getting that kind of feedback. The second thing that I would want to put forward, and I've already been talking with HPD about it, community pastors and community members and community neighborhood board members even, is the implementation of the broken window theory. And if you're not familiar with what that is, it was actually done in New York to help promote safety and security and well-being in the area. They were seeing huge amounts of crime. And what this is about, it's about taking care of the small stuff that affects the large stuff, such as illegal dumping, broken bus stops, abandoned vehicles. Instead of letting them sit for months on end, we take care of those little things right away, taking care of them, fixing the broken windows. And the last thing that I would promote is an economic assessment. We have environmental impact assessments, statements and assessments that are done when a project goes into the community. We need to have an assessment on what is the economic viability to the community on any project that's coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Naomi, your turn, please.
Well, I like what the other people were talking about. You know, that's innovating, reusing, because we are an island and I don't know if we can ship our garbage out like some other islands, but, you know, reusing what we have here, you know, coming back to best practices and reduce, reuse, recycle. And maybe innovating the way City Hall thinks, you know, like Galen said, not the same old, same old. You know, how can we be more responsive to the community and work together better? So, yeah, that's my answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Naomi. Andrea, please start this rotation. You have one minute to answer Lourdes Schreiber.
Recently, there has been a trend to privatize public services or create public-private partnerships. What are your criteria for considering the privatization of services?
Well, I think that now that we've been growing, especially on the island of Oahu, exponentially growing, the city and the state are trying to reflect on whether or not they can continue to sustain. And unfortunately, the state is so dependent on taxes that they keep thinking that taxes is going to solve it, and then it makes more people leave. So, I think in order for us to understand, like, what the city can actually handle, part of what needs to happen is understanding fiscally what their budget is and what they can live off of it, and then talk about what's needed versus what's wanted. And then it'll give you a good idea of what services the city can actually handle. Because I know there are various parts of the city, whether it's golf courses or parks where, you know, public service workers are very needed for these. And then in other areas, they've just been running into neglect. So, I think that those partnerships and understanding it, I don't know what the exact criteria would be besides just, one, do we have enough finances to cover it? And two, is it necessary where this partnership would benefit the community? And three, is it something that could be sustainable, that doesn't need to go and change back to into what it was?
Thank you very much, Andrea. Kathy, your response, please.
Thank you. And talking about public-private partnerships, this is another area that I've given a lot of thought to. And when you talk about the criteria, here's some of the questions that I've developed to make it, to make sure that we are looking at it in a very rational way. One of the questions, the first questions that I would ask is how will this affect the health and well-being of the community? Anything that I'm working on is really aimed at making sure we are in the best interest of the well-being. What's the best interest, or I'm sorry, the next thing I would ask is what's the best and worst that will happen if we support it? The third thing I will ask is what happens if we do nothing? The next piece of criteria is what is the economic impact for the cost of approving or disapproving to the surrounding community, to the taxpayers in general? What are the near-term impacts, the long-term impacts? And what happens when that program or project reaches its end life? And then where is the research behind this status? I want to see hard facts, not just guests, guestimates or emotional information. I want to see the facts and who are the authors, and then who stands to benefit from this initiative and who will it hurt? Those are my criteria for helping determine what kind of public-private partnerships we need to be involved with. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Naomi, your response, please.
Yeah, I agree a lot with what Kathy said about who will benefit from a private part of public-private partnership. It must be the citizens and residents of this island. We must be accountable for every single penny that they give to us, you know. At the end, who's going to come out better, the company or the community? And, you know, where's the responsibility for that? You know, like I said, I'm always about best value, you know, it's you know, we don't want to enter a private-public partnership and in the end, the contractor leaves and the city is holding the bag. So, it's going to depend on it. And then how would it affect workers? You know, well, using a private-public partnership, take jobs away from the citizens. So, yeah, it really depends on a project, but there can be some good things about a private-public partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Galen, your response, please.
A private-public partnership actually is a very good idea at times if done correctly. What often leads to a private working, giving that service out is, as we're finding out more and more, is special favors or corruption or friend of a friend. And that's not what it's made for. The city's got jobs that they're doing. They want to privatize it. That's good as a taxpayer thing. However, sometimes the city also needs to show, is it necessary for them to privatize something when they're already doing that themselves? Or is the city going to totally get out of the trash collecting business if they want to privatize it? There's a lot of details that have to go into it, and it's something that has to be negotiated and looked at very closely and not just done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Hey, Rick, Rick Tabor, what questions have you seen that hasn't been asked yet?
We have a few things. I have two twenty-five though, Lila. Do you want me to go into the two questions that we have or?
Yeah, why don't we go into those two questions?
All right. So, Dale's asking, "City Council grants developers permits to put up huge condo buildings but ignores the simple fact that the buyers are being funneled into complexes controlled by for-profit management companies with, which perpetuate rigged and fraudulent elections on new owners who are now members of a homeowners association tied to..." Let's see, try, okay, let's see. "Can you speak to, speak on City Council about this condominium issue?" Does that question make sense to folks? So, condominium issues are an issue that come up in Kukua Council quite a bit. Lila, do you want to elaborate on a little bit?
No, what I'd like to do is maybe have the candidates address what they know about.
Yeah. That's the best way to go.
Yes, and then we'll start with Kathy.
Sure, okay. Without a clear elaboration on where the question is going, I wanted to at least, and knowing where the Kukua Council is and that we're concerned about how, you know, housing affordability affects our seniors, maybe I can go in that direction and help elaborate a little bit on that. What we really need to make sure is that as we have this greatly aging population, the silver tsunami, as we've been talking about in other discussions that I've had, is we are not prepared for it. And we definitely need to have the housing affordability that's there for the seniors to be able to live either themselves or with others, a family member, so we're going to be taking care of them in the long term. So, we have to make sure that whatever we have available is going to be addressing the needs of this generation, that we're living longer and we're living better, and we need to be prepared for it.
Thank you very much. Galen, your response, please. Galen, your response, please. Please unmute yourself.
There it goes. There it goes. I was looking to the question more as the developers giving getting exceptions from the city council for variances on heights and stuff in lieu of more affordable units. However, what's happening is these affordable units, if there's two-hundred units, then they're saying twenty percent has to be so forty. However, that forty units can be off property. This came up the last time when the very first part of that unpopular poor man's door came up. Stuff like that should never have been, even been allowed or even considered. But, the way around it was they allowed developer to build the units off property. So, again, that's just as bad as the poor man's things. You're giving exceptions so people can get affordable housing. These people that qualify for the affordable housing, they don't get a lot of the stuff that comes with the unit. They have to buy their own icebox refrigerators. So, suddenly, what was affordable is not affordable. And the reason being is if these affordable units, if the person that originally passed for it fails his credit, then the unit is going back to the contractor and he can sell it at full market price. It should go back to another low-income affordable renter to have that chance. The system itself, the way it's set up benefits more of the developer, and it has to be more towards the residents that are buying it. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much, Galen, and I must apologize to Naomi. I went out of turn. Naomi, your turn, please, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, going to the neighborhood boards and seeing these developers come in and building affordable renters, which will start at thirteen-hundred dollars and run up to three thousand, I'm like, who is that affordable to? You know, I, and, like, you know, their criteria are so tight on how to get an affordable unit that they throw out all these AMIs and, you know, area income. And all these people are sitting there like, what? You know, so, to myself, I don't understand what they're talking about, you know, a lot of times. So, I can definitely understand community members when they have concerns that they don't want supposedly. Everybody sounds, oh, it's so good, you know, affordable, how the affordable rental, affordable this, and everything gets pushed through, but who is it affordable to? So, that is something I would definitely, you know, look into and try to understand. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Naomi. And Andrea, your answer, please.
Thank you. I dropped a couple links in the chat box, but one of the thoughts that was coming to my mind is that the legislature is one of the deciding factors in the whole home association. So, there's been quite a few sessions where we've had huge amount of bills that have to do with associations, condos, governing boards, even some illegal foreclosures of pushing people out. So, I think that on the city side, although they give the permits for those individuals to develop and to build these, I do believe that the state statutes stand with the state and not with the city. However, there is also the Community Association Institute of Hawaii, so they help to navigate because sometimes in the legislature, it's hard to follow so many bills and understand what all of it is saying. So, I would say they're a good institute that helps even myself to understand what is the package of bills for the homeowners association for this year? Are they helping residents or are they not helping residents? What does this do and how do I communicate it better to my community so that they can benefit from being a part of the decision-making process?
Thank you, Andrea. You know, Rick, I think, I'm sorry, we're running out of time, so I am going to wrap up if you don't mind. Thank you very much, all of you candidates. It's been really interesting listening to you. Because we're running out of time, each candidate will provide a closing statement of up to one minute, and let's start with Naomi.
Well, thank you, Kukua Council, and I'm glad I was able to participate in this forum. I said, I'm just a simple city employee who's running. I said, I'm just a simple city employee who's running for office and I want to be part of the solution to improve our community and, you know, make everyone really proud to just be a member of, well, just to live in Hawaii. I know everybody is proud and happy already, but I just want to improve the quality of life for all residents, whether you live in Waikai or Wai'ani. It don't matter, you know. We all deserve the best. So thank you for allowing me.
Thank you, Naomi. Galen?
I'm running on behalf of everybody in District 1. 66% of the people not voting or not even caring anymore isn't grounds enough. So many people have given up on us and the legislature and the government. I'm saying you have to trust us one more time. Maybe it's no more incumbents, nobody with connections, brand-new people, brand-new start. But we can't, all four of us can't do it alone. We each need your votes. And if you know somebody who's not registered, register them. To let 33% of the people select what's good for 64% of us or whatever is not a good value at all. And we're all responsible for this. And that's why all four of us are running with ideas and everything else. But it's basically, I'm looking at representing you, and it's not a popularity contest, and it's not a career. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Andrea, your closing statement, please.
Thank you so much. It's been an enjoyable afternoon. I've loved hearing all the different ideas and of course, thank the other candidates for being on the panel today. And I'm grateful for Kukua Council and hosting this so that people can see what our thoughts are and also chime in. Because like Galen said, I mean, no one person can do it alone. The fact that the city and the state is in this very bad fiscal position and now this unemployment position due to COVID, there's going to have to be a lot of leaders that decide to be unselfish and step into a really toxic and somewhat impossible situation and say, "Hey, I'm ready to work with the community and come up with solutions that are out of the box so that we can actually get to that end goal in our lifetime." My main vision is running for office so that I can help more local families afford to live here for generations to come. It's a real reality. If people aren't being pushed out of our state because of prices, then they're being pushed into homelessness. And that's, that's what people are looking at is how can we stop the trajectory of where our state is going? Well, here's your answer. Figure out how to get registered. Figure out who's representing you and making decisions that affect your daily life. Vote for them. Be a part of the conversation. And even after the vote, continue to engage. Show up at community meetings. Continue to make your voice prominent so that you can be part of shaping the future for your children and your grandchildren.
Thank you, Andrea. Kathy, your closing statement, please.
Thank you again to the Kukua Council for allowing us to have this forum and be introduced to the community. For those I want who are watching and want to know more information about myself, they can always go to my website at votekdavenport.com and read a lot more about me. To summarize, I really want people to know that as a life coach, one of the things I did, I have to be able to tell people not what they want to hear and able to make them feel good. I have to be able to tell them what they need to know so that they can take better actions, they can be better informed, and they'll make better decisions. As a military veteran, I know the meaning of service and sacrifice. And I will get the job done with dignity and respect, integrity and maturity, and most importantly, with transparency and compassion. Again, mahalo for the time to be here and thank you for hosting this wonderful forum.
Thank you, Kathy. Candidates and friends, thank you very much for being with us today. I hope you enjoyed it as much as I did. A week from today, the Kukua Council will hold a forum for Honolulu District 3 council member candidates. Please join us again. As a reminder, we're all voting by mail this year. Traditional polling places will not be open. Please remember to return reply cards to the office of the city clerk or go online to oldr.hawaii.gov. You should receive your primary election ballot on or about July 21st and must return it by August 8th. For more information, go online to the City and County's Election Division. We hope that you'll join us at Kukua Council to visualize what is possible when we collaborate to improve laws, policies, and practices impacting our community. Again, next week, we'll feature the council member candidates[1780.84]